Okay. Good evening and welcome to this evening's Board of Education meeting. I call this meeting to order at 7:12 on Monday, March 14, 2022. Ms. Janun, please take role.
This is Barry.
Here.
Mr. Batun is not here. Ms. Elzayat?
Here.
Ms. Fawaz?
Here.
Myself, Ms. Kaminski?
Here.
Mr. Sabah?
Here.
And I'm Sheri Abufur.
Thank you. If we could please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before the consent agenda, I just want to say welcome to everyone and it's really nice to see a full house. Thank you so much for all coming out. Ms. Janun, if you could please read the consent agenda?
Board of Education approval is recommended for the items listed on the consent agenda, which include the March 4th, 14th, 2022 board agenda, the minutes from the study session on Monday, February 28, 2022, the minutes from the regular meeting on Monday, February 28, 2022, and the check register dated February 1 through February 28, 2022.
Support?
Support.
We have a motion for Ms. Janun's support by Ms. Kaminski that the Board of Education approval is recommended for the items listed on the consent agenda, which include the March 14, 2022 board agenda, the meetings from the study session on Monday, February 28, 2022, the minutes from the regular meeting on Monday, February 28, 2022, and the check registry dated February 1 through February 28. Is there any discussion, please? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And now we're moving on. Are we moving the agenda around at all?
No.
Okay. We're moving on to the business report, please?
No. Board brainer. Board brainer.
How did, wait. I don't have board right now.
It's always before the consensus board.
It's not listed, I think she's saying.
It's not listed.
So, yeah, okay. So surprise to me.
Should be number four on your agenda.
It's...
I'm going my last.
No, I know, but it's never on the agenda.
It's okay.
Next.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
Board of Education, Madam President, and all those viewing in here today. We are honored to have our Hillcrest Elementary School Improvement Team. We have members from the school improvement team who are here this evening to present to the board and the community their school improvement plan as part of our board brainer. So I'd like to invite Principal Nusreensad and her team to the podium, please.
Oh, now I recognize some faces. I don't have my glasses, but yes.
Good evening, board members. We are here tonight to present our Hillcrest school improvement plan initiatives for our school year. But first, we're going to go ahead and introduce ourselves. My name's Nusreensad. I'm the Hillcrest principal.
Hi, everyone. I'm Fedwa Salami. I'm the Title I teacher.
Ali Yahamka, English Language Resource Teacher.
Hi, Veronica Greenlaw, reading interventionist.
Hello, Diva Mosham, EL Resource Teacher.
Hello, Linda Pratt, Resource Room Special Education Teacher.
Hi, Jessie Zarat, second grade teacher and writing coach.
Dan Vogel, STEAM enrichment teacher.
One more. Good evening. I'm Kristin Ramal, the literacy coach.
All right. So we're going to get started. We have here our Hillcrest Continuous Improvement Plan. So the focus is always literacy, numeracy, social emotional learning. In literacy, we broke it down into two parts. For our reading, all students will improve their reading proficiency across the curriculum. And for writing, all students will improve their writing skills through the use of six plus one traits across the curriculum. In numeracy, you'll see that all students will improve their proficiency in numeracy. And we have STEAM implementation throughout the building. All students will have an implementation of science, technology, engineering, math across the curriculum. We do have our ESL. All students will improve their English proficiency in reading, writing, listening, and speaking, as well as our special education. Each component would be discussed today to help you guys see how we envision this in the beginning of the year and how we move forward throughout the school year. First off, we have our... multitasking here. Initiatives to improve our student behavior. We have a school-wide PBIS program, including consistent class dojo to collect our data, as well as on MyStar, our rewards and consequences, our restorative practices and circles, adult-to-student mentor, our teach twos throughout the school year, our Husky News, our monthly celebrations, our peer buddies, and MTSS, our multi-tier system of support, as well as we continue to have our restorative practice and CPI training throughout the school year. Ms. Ramal?
Well, I am very privileged to be speaking on behalf of the Hillcrest staff. They have been working tirelessly in their literacy blocks, first and foremost with our new curriculum, the Ready Common Core. And it is a rigorous program, so they have been working on providing supports and scaffolding for their students as well. They have been diligently using the I Ready Pathway, which is the computer component of that curriculum. And we've been supporting them in their small group reading, which is where the students receive their individualized reading level lessons. And of course, we have monthly ELA committee meetings and grade level meetings to dig deeper into the data and make decisions based on that. And if we find a student is not making adequate growth, we meet with our MTSS team to provide necessary interventions and strategies for those students. And recently, in our last ELA committee meeting, we found building-wide, our next focus for our staff is going to be phonics. So let's dive in to the data. This is our I Ready results for winter. And as you can see, the red is below grade level, yellow is approaching grade level, and then green and dark green are grade level and beyond. Of most interest are the pyramid graphs at the bottom. And again, this is building-wide. So simply put, we want the red to decrease and the green to increase. And as you can see, that's happening across the board. And then if you quickly scroll through the grade level data, you can see that all grade levels are moving in the right direction. So we're very excited to see this with the new curriculum. The other assessment that we administer building-wide is the BASS assessment. That is a one-on-one reading test. The teacher has the opportunity to hear the student read and also ask them comprehension questions. Similarly to the I Ready data, the fall bar graph shows those scores. The bottom bar graph shows the winter scores. And again, we want to see that green growing. So across all grades, we're moving in the right direction. And again, very privileged to be working with such a hard-working team.
I feel the same way as Kristin. Thank you for having us. So my focus on reading, I'm a reading interventionist. The areas of implementation at Hillcrest have been, we use the BASS levels, but our groups for reading intervention are based on our MTSS data, our I Ready data, and as well as the BASS levels that are turned in. We work closely, I work closely, with the classroom teachers on student goals. We then look at those students who are achieving their goals and they're cycled through. And the curriculum that I use is the leveled literacy curriculum. It's an intervention program. And there's a few photos of me working with my kids. Thank you.
Okay. So I'm thankful to be here today and I represent myself and then also Mrs. Harat, Kristin Harat, who is our cross-categorical teacher in our building. We're lucky to have two programs in our building. Focusing just on literacy right now, both of us have had the opportunity to be trained in Orton Gillingham, and that is a wonderful multisensory way. It's strategies to help kids learn phonics and fluency, basic reading. So we use that with our small groups and our one-on-one students, those of the most high needs. We also use the BASS, the MLPP, and then we use the Literacy Footprints or the Pioneer Valley books to do our running records with, to collect our data. Weekly, we have a special education PLC team where we delve into this data for various children and talk about kind of what needs to be tweaked and what we can do. Our team there includes myself, Mrs. Harat, the cross-categorical, our social worker, our speech and language teacher, and our occupational therapist. I also have frequent communication. I work very closely with the general education teachers. My students are first and foremost general education students, and then I do push-in or I do pull-out depending on their needs. So I work very closely with them to determine what needs to be done that week coming up in terms of the general education curriculum. And then we also work on IEP goals. And we do things like writing journals, prompts, sentence stems, thinking maps.
Hi, I'm also very honored to be here today. I am speaking for the six plus one writing traits and the new initiatives that we have in writing. So this year, I had the honor of going to a six plus one training at the beginning of the school year. That was district-wide. And from there, we were able to immediately implement some of the strategies from six plus one, and it's a continuation from this year throughout the rest of my time here at Hillcrest and next year and so forth. So the planning of the implementation incorporates quarter writing genres. So we transferred from trimester writing to quarter genres and thinking maps. Providing to our teachers, we have been using a lot of professional development days to talk about the different parts of six plus one, to make sure all teachers are trained accordingly and to have different things in our classrooms that promote writing. We also are working on having rubrics across our building that align to six plus one traits. The lessons that are being implemented for each writing genre include different read aloud lessons and a lot of examples to promote students' ability to write. And again, like I said, we're using our thinking maps training to incorporate it into our writing weekly.
So over here, it's just like Ms. Ramal's slides as well. We're focusing on numeracy from fall to the winter time. And as you can see, we have shown, you know, positive growth as the red is decreasing and then the green and the yellow is increasing. And then some areas of focus that we've been working on at Hillcrest in regards to numeracy and math is focusing on the I Ready Pathway where students practice their math skills for 45 minutes a week, whether during school or at home. We've been reviewing I Ready scores right now from the fall to the winter. We provide the basic skills for students right now. Due to the pandemic, students are a little rusty with that. We have now math-guided groups, so it's a lot of small group instruction. We've started the Math-A-Thon to motivate students to be more positive in regards to math. We are now incorporating thinking maps as well. We do have monthly math committee meetings to discuss the data and strategies to improve math skills, as well as incorporating literacy with word problems and reading and writing as well in math. Okay. Going back to our special education, I won't repeat a lot of this, but in terms of math, we like to do a lot of chants and songs, repetition, anchor charts, things like that, to help teach and practice those basic skills that our students need. We use interactive notebooks. I love interactive notebooks. Again, we do a lot of basic skill practice on top of, again, like myself, working with the teachers, the general education teachers to see what students are needing extra instruction on extra practice with in the general ed curriculum. And that pretty much sums up the other slide. All right.
All right. So Mrs. Mosham and I represent the English Language Resource Department. I service kindergarten, first and second, and Mrs. Mosham services young fives, third and fourth grade. So we have it split up that way. The program we use is Cengage and includes language and literacy. In regards to WEEDO, we screen all kindergartners that are coming in that speak another language and all newcomers. And then as the school year, you know, goes on and we work with the students, we establish goals and we work on them before testing. And we're just finishing up testing right now. Our assessments include explicit teachings of vocabulary, review and assessments, grammar, and reading and comprehension.
So we provide 30 minutes of Cengage support. And in addition, we provide an additional 30 minutes of writing support. Throughout our writing support, we focus on narrative, informational, and opinion writings. We use rubrics to make sure students are aware of how they're going to be graded and what they're graded on. We also use graphic organizers for planning purposes. We conduct research. We write five paragraph essays. And we use the six plus one writing traits and also transition words. We also provide an hour of reading group support for our WEEDO one students. We focus on sight words, fluency, comprehension, oral language, daily writing phonics. We use LLI. We provide BASS assessments and running records as an additional assessment. And then, like they said before, we also use thinking maps. We use the bubble maps, the double bubble maps. And students use informational texts to help them gather information and write it down and use an organizer to help keep information organized.
So good evening again. In enrichment class, my goal is to make learning fun by promoting a growth mindset through hands-on learning and allowing them to promote their creative thinking skills. Students have an opportunity to develop their problem-solving and teamwork skills as well through design challenge activities. Highlighted on the slides here, you'll see some of my favorite activities from the year. Additionally, students are learning about coding basics and some STEM-related fields. And then I'm also co-teaching with classroom teachers to help provide them with STEM-related learning activities for their students. And then finally, we are at the Hillcrest Robotics Team and Girls Who Code are just a couple of our after-school clubs that the students get a chance to participate in.
Thank you, Mr. Vogel. And a few achievements and initiatives we had this school year. We had our I Ready Husky Achievers. We noticed, we collaborated with our other two schools, knowing that like Hive View had the Smarties Challenge. So we joined the bandwagon and we want to motivate our students to work on the learning pathways for I Ready to prepare them for the assessments throughout the school year. We have Math-A-Thon, which are math drills. We do it three times a year, which we motivate the kids within the classroom, as Ms. Salami mentioned before. PBIS monthly pause, they're basically representing the traits of the month. Those are the students that are within the classrooms are showing and representing those traits. Reading Husky Challenge is something that Ms. Smith, our library para, has established starting this past January. And it's to motivate kids to be reading and also thinking about the book, not just being able to read it, but to understand it as well with key comprehension questions that they fill out and they submit. As well as our lunch dojo. In lunchtime, we all know that kids are tending to want to cool and enjoy, have fun, talk to their friends. But at the same time, we got to motivate them to participate into the PBIS traits and implement that, being respectful to all others in the cafeteria. CAP, here are a few initiatives, well, plenty initiatives throughout the school year that have been occurring or will be occurring, whether it's the end of this school year or starting the next school year in third and fourth grade. I know you guys have them in front of you. They're just simple tasks and projects that teachers follow through with their standards. First, they teach a lesson, then they move it into a project for the students to have that rigor-thinking skill. In regards to our parent community involvement throughout the school year, we've had our parent education series, which is part of teaching our parents about the curriculum, how can they help support their child at home? We've had our support staff attend these meetings and implement strategies for parents to use at home. Coffee Talk with the Principal, which I'm having one tomorrow at 10:00 a.m. in the media center, just shouting that out, whoever's watching this. It's just to motivate parents to let them know what's going on in the building and fun initiatives occurring throughout the school year. Lunch Helpers, we have Lunch Helpers. We've been showing our fourth graders, trying to help them grow as role models. And they've been helping us out throughout the school year, as well as lunch moms coming into the building and helping us out covering lunches when needed. Class Dojo, a great resource for parents to reach out. Text message on the spot when the teacher's teaching a lesson, notice a student did something, whether it's good or needs work on, they'll send them a text message to the parents on the spot. We have local businesses that support us throughout school events. Parent support with school fundraisers, field trips, and school events. You can also check us out on our social media here, Facebook, Instagram, our Google website, and some more newsletter, which shout out to Ms. Marveso. She was the one that shared that with us the school year. So we decided to also attend that and try it out. It's been working out great. Just organizes our information on our websites. And then we're also on Twitter. And that completes our presentation today.
Thanks. Thank you. With that said, I did have the opportunity to observe you the other day. You know, I went in to read and you guys were, all three principals, were busy at work. She was having lunch with the students that were...
Third graders.
The third graders.
Yep, they had...
They were, they were so excited. I could not believe, I mean, you can tell that Dr. Masalam and the principals are putting their money where their mouth is because to see how you're challenging these students is what our dream has been. And we love what we're seeing and we appreciate everything you guys are doing. With that, any comments from the board?
Yeah, if you don't mind.
Go ahead. Mr. Sabah?
First of all, nice job by all of you. I can tell you guys really like to work with each other, as many of you stated.
Please come this way, sir.
I know.
I can't see through the monitor. I'm trying, but I'm not there. I can barely see the monitor from here, but that's okay. You guys just did a fantastic job. And you know, last presentation by Ms. Bazey and Ms. Salami were just... you guys, Nusreens, that's a testament to you and your entire staff. So I just, I just can't tell you guys how proud I am of the work. I know we have a lot of work, looking at the I Ready numbers. A little disappointed, but then again, kids being at home. I think we learned they're better off in the schools. We knew that all along, but this is just something that I think is going to take a little while to get going. But you got the right staff to do it. So kudos to all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Fawaz?
So again, nice job. Hillcrest always does a great job. It was nice to see the numbers improve. I know they're not where we want them to be, but really nice job. At least they're all improving. I did have a question in regards to the WEEDO and the EL support. So when the kids, especially when they come into that so young, how long before you typically see them, I guess I want to say graduate from it or not need the support anymore?
So usually, they are assessed yearly. And if they pass the domains of the WEEDO test, that's how they graduate out of it. But support is provided to all WEEDO ones. So if they're a WEEDO one, they have 10 hours of support. If they're a WEEDO two, they receive five hours of support. And we visit all ESL classrooms daily.
So would you say they test out after elementary school?
Not necessarily.
So federal mandate is that they have to pass, they have to test out of the WEEDO, but they also have to get certain proficiency scores on the M step as a combination. And the ultimate goal is to exit students as much as possible. And I think our EL team does a very good job with that across the district. And with our rising EL numbers in elementary, this is why we're making these investments so that we can invest in our children earlier to support them as they go through.
Over the years, we've noticed that the fourth graders start to test out. That's where they, that's, it takes them to fourth grade where they usually test out of being an EL. They pass the WEEDO at that point. So they take it every end of the winter and then we get the results in the fall and we go from there.
Thank you.
But the support doesn't stop.
No.
The support continues.
Every single day.
Mrs. Jawad make sure of that, I'll tell you that.
Yes. Mrs. Jawad, yes. Okay, Ms. Janun?
I think it's obvious that, you know, you guys come, came in, working together as a team. And, you know, as everyone, the I Ready scores, we get that, but it just goes to show you that every district is different. But even with that, every building is different and the needs of each building is different. But the fact that the scores are improving shows that the work is being, you know, you guys are doing the work and you'll get there and the kids will get there. But thank you guys for coming out and we appreciate you guys.
Thank you for recognizing that, especially about Hillcrest. We do have a different population and often it's just a little bit more difficult, but we are going in the right direction.
Thank you, guys.
As a former Hillcrest man, a long time ago, I'm really excited to see what you're doing and to see the camaraderie because Hillcrest didn't always have that. So it's really nice to see you guys work as a team. So I applaud that and I'm excited to come next week and read.
Thanks. Ms. Elzayat?
Just congratulations on being a wonderful team. You can tell that you guys work really well together. And a special thank you because from your presentation and just from your attitude today, I can tell that each and every one of you are the roll up your sleeves and get the job done, no matter what it takes, with a smile on your face. And we all know that that's very hard to do. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
On a last note, I just want to say to all the teams that have come out, we appreciate your presentations. They're very informative and like, you know, my fellow colleagues have said, we're excited to see the scores and we are watching and we appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you. And I do want, before they go, I apologize. I do want to give Hillcrest, Kinlock, and Hive View a shout out for the reason that if you, reflecting on all three presentations, now that all three elementary schools have gone, you see that the schools are also communicating with one another too. And they're talking about best practices. We are getting to the point, and we will be there, where we are one large PLC. Taking us some time because we're coming off the pandemic. And this team here, as said by the board, I appreciate your comments because all of our schools are identifying that we have to follow the data and we have to follow best practices and we have to be patient in the process because that patience is the key. So thank you all for your tremendous work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I think now I'm on the right page. Okay, with that, moving on to business report, please. Ms. Morgan?
The first item on our action item is approval of requisitions. The attached list of requisitions are items that buildings or departments would like to purchase for their upcoming needs. These requisitions have gone through all the appropriate approval processes and have been approved by administration for purchase. In addition, there are funds available to make these purchases. Once requisitions are approved, they will be processed and purchase orders will be sent out.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Sabah?
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the requisitions per attachment 5A1.
Support? We have a motion from Mr. Sabah, supported by Ms. Janun at the Crestwood Board of Education. Approve the requisition per attachment 5A1. Is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries?
Number two, approval of confirming purchase orders. The attached confirming purchase orders are items that need to be purchased prior to the board approval. These purchases include the wrestling state lodging for our two members that made it to state wrestling and also robotics T-shirt competitions that were unable, so they could wear it before they got there.
Madam Chair?
Ms. Elzayat?
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the confirming purchase orders per attachment 5A2.
We have a motion for Ms. Elzayat, supported by Ms. Janun at the Crestwood Board of Education. Approve the confirming purchase orders per attachment 5A2. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries?
Thank you. Number three is approval of overnight field trip. Crestwood High School would like to take approximately 20 students to Chicago, Illinois, to attend theater workshops, theater tours, productions, and other team building activities. Attached is the itinerary for the trip and other relevant information provided by the high school. The trip will provide an amazing opportunity and experience for our students.
Madam Chair?
Ms. Fawaz? I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the overnight field trip for Crestwood High School students to go to Chicago, see attachment 5A3.
Support. We have a motion from Ms. Fawaz, supported by Ms. Elzayet at the Crestwood Board of Education. Approve the overnight field trip for Crestwood High School students to go to Chicago, see attachment 5A3. Is there any questions or comments? My question is, how many chaperones?
There's four chaperones and all employees of the district.
Okay, they're all employees of the district?
Yes.
Okay, that's good to know. With that, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Number four. Sorry, I thought you were saying something. Approval of Pell Industries contract. Crestwood High School would like to enter into an agreement with Pell Industries, Inc. Pell Industries is a wholesale manufacturer who produces high quality apparel. The company would like permission to use, utilize our school logo and name on merchandise to sell at local retailers in our community. The district would receive 10% royalty on all sales. A copy of the contract has been attached for your review.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Kaminski. I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the contract with Pell Industries as per attachment 5A4.
Support. We have a motion from Ms. Kaminski, supported by Ms. Janun at the Crestwood Board of Education. Approve the contract with Pell Industries as per attachment 5A4. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Sabal.
I think Sabal was first. Go ahead, Sabal. I'm okay with that.
I, I'd just like to know, as far as attire, do we, are we able to see what they make or what they, you know, stamp our label on? Do they get to just do that and, you know, we never see what was ever done? Just, you know, worried of something like distasteful? How does that work?
They will send samples of what they make. However, once we do give permission to use our logo, then technically they could put on whatever they want, but we can also terminate the contract at any time. So if we witness apparel at these stores that we do not appreciate or approve of, then we can terminate the contract within 30 days.
But all of that would already be out there, right?
Correct.
If you notice, you go to some of the local vendors, even Dick's Sporting Goods, you'll see local high schools, it's the same company.
Yeah, my question was around the 10% royalty for licensing agreement. Obviously, the cost is carried by Pell, but is that pretty typical on the 10%?
It is for a lot of districts, yes.
It is. Do we have numbers on other districts on what they're receiving?
I know that, I did not research the ones near us. I do know several of them are at 10%. There is one at 15%, but not with this company.
Is it based off of student population?
I don't have that answer. I can look into that for you.
And have they shared which local retailers they will be?
Target, Walmart, and those were the two that they mentioned.
Walmart?
No, it was Walmart.
There's no Walmart in our, okay. I see them at Walgreens and stuff often. I know there's somebody else doing that. Is what's different between this and those that have our apparel on Walgreens, for example?
The ones that have the apparel on Walgreen, we're not getting royalties from.
How are they doing?
That's the, there is a workaround. This is why if we get this contract, we guarantee this royalty. Because we're not a, our, our logo is not a trademark currently. If we want to go that route, we would have to officially do that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So who spearheads this project? Who keeps track of what's going out, what's going in the stores? Do you, who approves like proofreading? Do they send you that? Was all of that already negotiated?
It was all, went through the high school with Mr. Abdahadi.
Okay.
So my only question would be, how does that affect the sales of our district merchandise and the royalties and the profits there?
Well, currently, we do not do a lot of sales of our own, so we're building that program at the high school. So right now, without that, our students don't have a lot of access to these products. So that's why he wanted to go through that. The principal wanted to attend to this so that we could get more apparel out there for students to buy quicker.
Madam Chair, I mean, I do know that Mr. Abdahadi, him and Mike Schley, Mr. Schley have been talking about getting a Crestwood shop going. And therefore, when we do so, this, we can, we have both. We have the 10% royalties from this company plus whatever sales we make.
Ms. Janun, any?
I was going to say, we don't sell that often in the, in the, like, we maybe offer it once or twice a year, I think, to the students and staff.
We offer it to the staff. It's just a staff offer. And there's no profit in it. It's just, it's even cost.
One last question. Did, and I'm not sure, did we look at any local vendors for this? I, I know they have the merchandising agreements probably with Target and I don't know why they would do it at Walmart because there's nothing around here, but did we not try to find any local vendors for this?
No local vendors do this where they have the contract with these companies like Target. And I want to say Walgreens was one of them and I may have misread it. But the local vendors, they could produce for us, for us to sell, but they don't have the.
They're, they're not going to carry the cost like Pell's.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
And I, I think they don't work with the stores.
The merchandising. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, with that, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. With that, we're moving on to the personnel report. Dr. Lazar.
It's not 30 this time, trustees, but it is seven and seven that we're very excited about. Our first action item this evening is the appointment of a restorative practices and PBIS facilitator at Riverside Middle School, Ms. Tashara Ewing. Ms. Ewing earned her Bachelor of Science in Criminal Justice from Eastern Michigan University and is currently pursuing her Master of Social Work at Walden University. She has experience as a targeted caseworker, school climate and restorative practice specialist and a prevention specialist. She is certified in restorative circles and restorative conferences through the IIRP in addition to youth mental health first aid. She's very passionate about working to help students succeed and we're super excited.
Mr. Sabal.
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Tashara Ewing as the restorative practices and PBIS facilitator for the 2021-2022 school year according to the salary schedule class one. Step one, effective pending acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law, see attachment 6A1.
Support. We have a motion from Mr. Sabal, supported by Ms. Fawaz at the Crestwood Board of Education. Approve the hiring of Tashara Ewing as a restorative practices and PBIS facilitator for the 2122 school year according to the salary schedule classification, one, step one, effective pending acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law, see attachment 6A1. Is there any discussion, questions?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Kaminski.
Is this a new position that's not replacing somebody, correct?
New, correct.
That's what I thought. Thank you.
I think that's the one we discussed not too long ago with the movement of Mr. Bedouin.
Okay, with that, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Is Ms. Ewing here?
She's not here. Ms. Ewing currently lives in Flint. She is looking for an apartment close by, so I know that we've been doing some verification to help her do that. She's an only child and her, her mom, we promised her mom we'd take very good care of her when she moved down here, so.
We're looking forward to having her join the family.
Definitely. Okay.
Our second action item this evening is the appointment of a food services lunch monitor for Hillcrest Elementary, Ms. Rash Assad. Ms. Rash Assad is a parent with elementary and secondary students in the Crestwood School District. Ms. Assad has volunteered at Hillcrest Elementary and is excited to be joining the Hillcrest team.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Janun.
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Rash Assad as a lunch monitor for the 2122 school year according to the CFS contract, step one, effective pending acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law, see attachment 6A2.
Support. We have a motion from Ms. Janun, supported by Mr. Sabal, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Rash Assad as a lunch monitor for the 2122 school year according to the CFS contract, step one, effective pending acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law, see attachment 6A2. Is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Our third action item this evening is the appointment of a paraprofessional for Highview Elementary, Ms. Nadine Othman. Ms. Othman is currently enrolled in HFC's Early Elementary Education Program. She believes that outstanding teachers are leaders, caring and supportive. She hopes to be able to support students as they find their aha moments and ensure that they are encouraged and believe in themselves. She's very excited about starting on this path.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Janun.
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Nadine Othman as a paraprofessional for the 2122 school year according to the para contract, step one, effective pending acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law, see attachment 6A3.
Support. We have a motion from Ms. Janun, supported by Mr. Sabal, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Nadine Othman as a paraprofessional for the 2122 school year according to the para contract, step one, effective pending acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law, see attachment 6A3. Is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Dr. Lazar, if they're here, please point whoever, yeah.
Will do. Our fourth action item this evening is the appointment of a special education teacher for Riverside Middle School, Ms. Dawn Barbosa. Ms. Barbosa holds a Bachelor of Science and a Master of Education from the University of Michigan Dearborn. She's currently working on her doctoral degree in curriculum and instruction. She has 12 years of experience in education ranging from classroom teaching to serving as a mathematics specialist and math coach. She has supported teachers through observation and feedback, PLCs, in-class academic support for students and the IEP process. She has been a mentor teacher and a member of RTI and PBIS teams.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Sabal.
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Dawn Barbosa as a special education teacher for the 2021-2022 school year according to the CFT contract, MA step seven, effective pending acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law, see attachment 6A4.
Support. We have a motion from Mr. Sabal, supported by Ms. Kaminski, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Dawn Barbosa as a special education teacher for the 2122 school year according to the CFT contract, MA step seven, effective pending acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law, see attachment 6A4. Is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And Ms. Barbosa is here today? There she is. So I, I have to mention what, really quickly, what Ms. O'Hara shared with us. In the final question, when she was asked kind of what makes you stand out for this position, she actually has kind of stepped away from being fully immersed in education for years. So she said, I'm not COVID fatigued. Can I start tomorrow?
Ms. Barbosa, if you'd like to say a few words, please help yourself to the podium.
Our fifth action item this evening is the appointment of an assistant principal for Riverside Middle School, Ms. Batul Eid. Ms. Eid earned her Bachelor of English with a minor in ESL from the University of Michigan Dearborn. She holds a Master of Educational Leadership from Eastern Michigan University and a Master of Curriculum and Instruction from Western Governors University. She has six years of teaching experience at the secondary level. Ms. Eid has served as a safety crisis team member, has led the new teacher mentor committee, organized mental health and cultural and diversity events, as well as facilitated technology professional development. Additionally, she has also been chair of the school improvement team where she led the MDE onsite review and Cognia engagement review processes. She believes in building trust and collaboration.
Madam Chair.
Wow. Wow, okay. Go ahead, Ms. Fawaz.
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Batul Eid as an assistant principal for the 2021-2022 school year according to the administrative contract, class one, step one, effective pending acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law, see attachment 6A5.
Support. We have a motion from Ms. Fawaz, supported from, by Mr. Sabal, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Batul Eid as an assistant principal for the 2122 school year according to the administrative contract, class one, step one, effective pending acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law, see attachment 6A5. Is there any discussion? The only discussion is, wow, some, they were excited. Wherever Batul is, they were excited to bring you on board. So with that being said, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, who's the lucky one?
Ms. Eid is here.
Hello, everybody. Good evening. I would just like to thank Mr. Masalem, the board and the community for giving me this opportunity. It's surreal. My parents are here. I'd like to thank them for the sacrifices that they've made. They're the reason why I'm standing here today. My husband, for his patience and support of my goals. And I would also lastly like to congratulate my fellow colleagues, Sarah and Marwa, on their appointments as assistant principal as well. I look forward to serving Crestwood Schools and I'm excited to start my new journey here. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Okay, next, okay.
Our sixth action item this evening is the appointment of assistant principal at Riverside Middle School, Ms. Sarah Colada. Ms. Colada earned her Bachelor in Biology from Eastern Michigan University and her Master of Educational Leadership from Wayne State University. She has nine years of experience in education. Ms. Colada has sponsored the Sustainability Coalition, Science Bowl, Chemistry Olympiad and WSTEM Clubs. She has chaired the Green Schools Initiative, coordinated and participated in community service opportunities for students and established student-run food gardens. She has delivered professional development on engaging all learners, advisory course development and using UDL and PSYOP frameworks in a virtual setting. She hopes to promote staff professional growth, teamwork and cooperation among all stakeholders.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Sabal.
Recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Sarah Colada as an assistant principal for the 2021-2022 school year according to the administrative contract, class one, step one, effective pending acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law, see attachment 6A6.
Support. We have a motion from Mr. Sabal, supported by Ms. Janun at the Crestwood Board of Education. Approve the hiring of Sarah Colada as an assistant principal for the 2122 school year according to the administrative contract, class one, step one, effective pending acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law, see attachment 6A6. Is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, who's the lucky one?
She's here. There she is. Welcome. You don't have to.
You don't have to.
You don't have to.
All right, there you go.
This is your first directive.
Well, hello, my name is Sarah Colada. It's so nice to meet everybody. I'm so excited you don't even know. When I got the opportunity, I literally danced in my office at lunch and I'm, I'm just so excited to be a part of the team and to be able to work with such accomplished people and, and just ready to move everything forward and, and create a good atmosphere. So thank you.
How do you pronounce your last name? Did you say Colada or Colada?
Colada.
Colada, okay, thank you.
So now I have to work on it. Thanks, Justice. No, we're going to work and say it right.
Okay, moving on.
And last but not least, our seventh action item this evening is the appointment of a secondary assistant principal for Crestwood High School, Ms. Marwa Hyder. Ms. Hyder has been a dedicated member of the Crestwood team for the past 15 years. She has served in the role of teacher, instructional coach, and most recently taken on additional duties in order to assist with assistant principal duties as we have worked to fill this position. Through her time in Crestwood, Ms. Hyder has also served as a PSYOP coach, worked as a member of the leadership team for eight years, was elected to curriculum council, supported the use of data to guide instruction and has remained committed to the success of students, staff and families in our district.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Elzayet.
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Marwa Hyder
as an assistant principal for the 2021-2022 school year according to the administrative contract, Class 1, Step 3, effective pending criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law, see Attachment 6A7.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion from Ms. Elzayat, supported by Mr. Sabal, because he's the loudest. That the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Marwa Hyder as the assistant principal for the 21-22 school year according to the administrative contract, Class 1, Step 3, effective pending acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law, see Attachment 6A7. Is there any discussion?
I am confident Ms. Eid and Ms. Koyada are gonna do a fantastic job. I have no doubts. But it's just been fantastic watching Ms. Hyder. God, I don't know how many years now. And I'm very proud of you. I think you've done a fantastic job. Every one of my kids loves you, so I don't know what you do, but you do a fantastic job. I'm very proud of you. Congratulations.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Ms.
I just wanted to say it was an honor to make this recommendation. Marwa was teacher to my three students, who I would attribute most of their success to, as a mentor, as a leader, as a teacher. And I am so happy that you've come this far. You've stuck with us, and this is what all your hard work gets. So, thank you, Marwa.
Okay, with that, any, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I just wanted to say thank you, all of you, for this opportunity. I'm very, very, very excited to move the district forward with, excited to work with Dr. or Mr. Abdul Haddi. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Marwa. Thank you.
Madam President, if I may just add.
Dr. Masalem.
Thank you. I just wanted to take a moment, you know, as a district, we've been going through some difficult times with COVID and the pandemic. And a lot of times, people don't understand the level of work that our administrators across all the buildings do because they're doing a lot of things behind the scenes. I'm really excited for our three new additions. I believe that it's going to help us continue to grow. I believe it's going to help our students. And in my conversations with all three of them, as you know the interview process, they gotta come through me at the end. It's an informal conversation. And every one of them was like, you know, I can't wait to get in and help with instruction. And I said, "Let me just explain something to you as an assistant principal. Our goal is that your focus is on instructional leadership. But you're gonna be coming into a situation where you're gonna have to transform students' lives to understand what it is to be back in school after a pandemic." And they were all like, "That's great. I'm ready. Ready to go."
Well, that's what we wanna hear.
So I'm looking forward to our three new team members, family members, as Trustee Sabal mentioned, because it is true. And I suckered them into coming with my kindness. Now they're gonna start seeing, no, I'm just joking. But I'm looking forward to it because we have so many dedicated people in this district, and I really want those that are dedicated to shine. And it starts with the support of our administrative teams at every building. So, congrats. And to your families, thank you. But I ask you to forgive me, because you may not see them as much as you're seeing them now.
Stop scaring.
But thank you.
Dr. Masalem, I obviously appreciate your comments, but when it brings Andrea O'Hara to tears because she's happy, I'm excited. So, it's gotta be a really good thing. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
And congratulations, everybody. I'm excited.
Those are tears of joy, right? I just wanna make sure. I don't know. If you're looking at Marwa, I don't know if that was.
I just have to say, Marwa's been your friend, and I'm just so happy because she's been dedicated to our school and our kids for a really long time, and she's.
Yep. I just wanna say that I'm excited that they're up for the challenge. And I can't wait to see the changes that you guys all make, because that's what we're looking for. Positive change and to challenge our students for the better. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, moving on.
So we have some informational items. But before we get there, Leila, I think Khato Andrea needs a hug. So, our informational items for tonight, we do have resignation of Tikrit Al Ghazali, social worker from Riverside Middle School, Samira Daklala, transition liaison from Riverside Middle School, and Craig Campbell, English teacher from Crestwood High School. That concludes me.
Thank you for all that goodness, I should say.
Yes, good news.
Yes. Dr. Masalem, superintendent's report.
Superintendent's report. So, I have one action item and one, several informational items. But our action item is, again, the Henry Ford Middle College Trade School. Henry Ford Middle College Trade School is a dual credit enrollment course for qualified students currently enrolled at Crestwood High School. Students entering 11th grade will have the opportunity to enter a three-year program that combines high school coursework with the first two years of college, allowing the students to earn credits towards their high school diploma and an associate's degree in the trade apprentice education programs.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Kaminsky.
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the Henry Ford Middle College Trade School Agreement as presented in Attachment 7A1.
Support.
We have a motion from Ms. Kaminsky, support by Ms. Janun at the Crestwood Board of Education. Approve the Henry Ford College Trade School Agreement as presented in Attachment 7A1. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Ms. Kaminsky.
I just wanna say how excited I am about this. I've been a huge advocate for trades, and thank you for listening. And I want the kids out there who wanna do trades to know you are very needed, and we are excited to offer this opportunity. That's all.
See, if you would've picked me, I'd have said the same thing, but now she stole my vote. No.
I've been here a while.
I do agree. I think, you know, this is a fantastic move. I just, how long is this agreement for?
It's yearly. Every year we renew it.
So it's annual.
Yep. Annual. Thank you.
What I wanna say is I'm excited to see it happen. I know this has been, it took us a few years to get it, to get, you know, for you guys to get it going. So this is great news, and we're excited to see the participation that it will take on. So with that, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And I do wanna add, I do wanna stand my gratitude to Henry Ford College as well as the Dearborn Board of Education. As you all know, the Henry Ford College falls under the Dearborn Board of Education. They've been extremely crucial in supporting us in our development, and we have more coming. So, some more coming.
That's great.
And I also wanna thank, I wanna give Joel Fabris kudos, because he's been working diligently on this. This is one of his agenda.
We can't forget Mr. Fabris. We know that he's doing a lot behind the scenes.
He is.
And to thank him for that.
He definitely is. So, information items, we have a lot. Some, a lot of good things. So, athletic highlights, we wanted to highlight. So, wrestling team are the Western Wayne Athletic Conference League Tournament Champions. So, congratulations to the Crestwood Wrestling Team. Anas Shalhoub and Mohamed Hakim competed in the Michigan High School Athletic Association State Wrestling Finals. Mohamed Hakim was, is an all-state wrestler. He finished in eighth place. So, I wanna give them a lot of credit. Our boys bowling finished third in the WAC Conference. So, they're growing. This is something really cool. I mean, I know we've talked about it several times. I don't know if you all remember, I said, "I'm bringing esports to this district." So, esports is currently number one in the country for the spring season.
Yeah.
The team competes in Call of Duty, Rocket League, Halo, Chas, and Super Smash Brothers. So, I know a lot of people don't like the shooting games, but that's the reality of what our kids play. So.
I never thought a superintendent would be so happy to see a video game.
Well, you know, let me tell you, with the direction of virtual reality and where everything is going, this is the future. And this is why we're kicking this in place. There are several scholarships in universities for this.
Yes.
So, we want our kids to take advantage as much as we can. And I believe our Valley Victorian is like one of the best players in the nation right now. So.
Well, one of our locals, the Met. I mean, he's one of.
He's a Dearborn kid.
Yeah.
He's still one of ours.
Yeah, I know.
Right? So, yeah.
Wait, I'm sure we got some TikTok famous kids that I haven't read yet. So, I'll find those out soon. Crestwood Robotics. Crestwood High School has rebranded themselves through the Charger Robotics. As you can see, we're growing that program as we promised the district we would. Charger Robotics and the Robo Ravens will compete on March 18th and 19th at Levonia Churchill High School and March 25th and 26th at Belleville High School. So, we're looking forward to that. Very important dates that I wanna reiterate, as we're getting everything planned well in advance. So, we have our National Honor Society induction ceremony, May 14th. All board members will receive invitations for that. Our senior prom is May 20th. Senior finals are May 25th and May 26th. Senior graduation rehearsal is June 2nd. Honors night is June 2nd. All board members will receive an invitation. Graduation is June 4th. Again, you will receive an invitation. We're gonna follow the same format we followed last year with some adjustments. And graduation rain date, we don't wanna tell you that, but just in case, if we have to postpone, it'll be June 6th. But we're hoping we don't. Wanna give kudos to Riverside Middle School, as they understand that they have to reach out to parents. So, they are hosting, you know, their parent meetings. Meetings are 1:30 to 3:00. I did discuss with them, Trustee Sabal, as mentioned before, about doing another one in the evening. So, we're looking at that as well. March 17th is Mental Health 101. April 14th is cyberbullying. May 12th is parenting and adolescent, setting limits and boundaries with your child. Yes.
I would say, I know they, initially, their first meeting was in the evening, and they had just a few, they actually had like 15 more people show up when it was earlier. But it was, so it's supposed to be on YouTube, but did you guys have some glitches, David, that it didn't, it wasn't live?
The first one was.
Okay. But it was, okay.
Yeah. So, it is, there are YouTube as well. Yes. Again, March is Reading Month. Wanna thank all the board and everyone for going out to read. I love going out to read. I always tell everyone, when I go read, I'm like a grandparent. I rile the kids up, and then I leave them for the teachers, and I walk out. So, I had fun. But by the way, I need to get with Mrs. Talib, because she had a second grader that said I looked like Superman. I wanna buy that kid dinner. All right? Oh, yeah. Mrs. Jawad has the video. So, I made sure I told my entire family that he thinks I'm Superman. So, I'm gonna, you know, we gotta find that young man so I can buy him whatever he wants.
The cutest video I have ever seen in a lot of years, and what he said, and the response, and then the look on his face because God upon, was right.
Can you forward that?
Can you forward it?
Can you forward that video to me, please?
Can I forward it up?
Evidence is on video.
You know, and the nice thing is, I always try to get into the schools as much as I can throughout the year. But with March is Reading Month, it really forces you to be there. So, and you have a captive audience. And then finally, just superintendent's commentary. I just, again, I wanna thank all of our new candidates, our new administrators, Mrs. Barbosa for special education team, our paraprofessional, our lunch. You know, we're moving. As you saw, the Hillcrest team, yes, the iReady data, it's getting better. Coming off this pandemic, when we saw the fall data, we were all freaking out a little bit, like, oh my God. But we're seeing the move. What I love the most, and I will say this, I've been having my future focus meetings, and the elementary ones were phenomenal. We had one middle school one, had a smaller turnout, but hopefully there'll be more coming. And that was in direct correlation to the board asking me to have these small focus groups and to discuss things. The beautiful thing is, no one came into those meetings with excuses. Not one person. They focused on what is working. And they, and I told them, this is, tell me what you need. And they did. They said, "We need this, we need..." And everything they asked for is doable. And you know what it all comes down to? They're asking, "Get us more training in this. Get us more training in this." This just tells me that these are the doers. These are the teachers that know, hey, we gotta make some adjustments. And they're not afraid to say, "And I need some help on how to make that adjustment." And our response is, "Whatever you need." So, I find, the last thing I wanna say is, I wanna thank the board, because what you've seen in the three SIP presentations thus far, what you'll see continuing forward, is the investments that you have approved for us in order to use our budgets wisely to get our teachers and our students what they need. So, thank you to the Board of Education. And that's my commentary, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Okay. Any public comments? Kristen? None? Okay. With that being said, any board comments?
Yeah, just, Dr. Masalem, I love that you're doing focus groups slash listening sessions. You know, I think in any corporation, organization, if you asked participants, "How many of you wanna see changed?" They'd all stand up and be happy. And how many of you do, well, the next question would be, "How many of you want to change?" None of them would stand up. You changed. So, kudos to you. You took on the challenge. You took it to the next level. And I think the more you hear the members of this family speak, the easier your job becomes to adjust on the fly. So, kudos to you. Kudos to all the new family members, to your families. Congratulations. There's a lot that goes into where you're at. Nobody can ever take that away from you. Nobody saw the 12:00, 12:00 AM studying sessions for the test the next day and everything else. But congratulations to all of you. You guys deserve this. Congratulations to Mohamed Hakim, Anas Shalhoub, and Amr Jafar, who's not on here, but he did get close to it, didn't make the states.
He was heartbroken.
He was heartbroken. Very proud of all three of those young men, very proud of our basketball team. I know that they lost in the end to a team that I won't mention. But.
They shall remain nameless.
They shall remain nameless, because I may go off on a different tirade, but that's okay. I'm proud of all the kids. Athletics is, you know, there's nothing that compares to our education. Academics is the most important. But listen, athletics is so key. And I'm gonna plug facilities again one last time. We have got to get into modern day with our facilities. We've got the athletes. We've got, we've got the, you know, the student athletes. So, you know, to all the citizens of this community, we have got to step up our game, because our kids deserve it.
And we all agree with you.
I know you do.
We do.
We all agree with you 100%.
I say it every week, so I'll, you know.
Ms. Faouz?
What can you say after that? Right. Congratulations to everyone, and, you know, good luck and welcome. And did you want to bring up anything for the Willstain, or you'll do that?
With the what, I'm sorry?
Willstain.
You're welcome to comment.
I'll let you bring it up.
Ms. Janun?
So, congratulations to everybody. I know brought Andrea to tears, but I'm, you know, excited to see us, I think, as a district, you know, with the right leadership and moving forward. I think, you know, we're looking forward to taking those next steps. So, I'm excited for you guys, and welcome to the team. I do wanna say that I did read to all three elementary schools this week. And, you know, Sue, when Sue mentioned that she was, you know, nervous to read to the kindergarteners, and then I went to read to third graders, and I was like, "I wish I would've practiced prior to reading to them." But it was, it was, it was fun. And they were, it was just a joy. And honestly, it was a treat for me just as much.
I took a lot of cocaine, a lot of sugar. I dropped it off, and then I left.
So, I will say this.
It was really nasty, wasn't it?
I will say this to the kindergarteners. I was gonna bring, I was gonna take a book, and, you know, I know Sue had done the same thing. She had brought a treat. And then, and then when I was gonna go to the kindergarten class, and Nasrin was like, "Mo already brought them something." And I was like, "Yes."
Oh, okay. You did not.
I won't do that.
I tried to find the powdered sugar.
I said, "I won't do that" to Ms. Salome and Ms. Bazey. So, I did not take them treats. But it was, it was a treat for me to read to them. So, thank you.
Ms. Kaminsky.
Congrats to all our new hires. I'm really excited to have you join the Crestwood family. You're gonna like it. We really are family. So, congrats. And I also read so far, just to have you, I'm gonna read at the other two schools next week. But to you, Dr. Masalem, I read a book called Why Not You? And it was about, you know, meeting your dreams, and you can be anything you wanna be. And then we had a little discussion afterwards about, "What do you wanna be?" And I had one little boy in first grade who said he wanted to be the superintendent of schools.
Oh.
So, I don't know what you're telling one of these kids. You know, most kids wanna be the president.
Maybe he thought he could be Superman.
Superman.
Maybe. Yeah, but that was first grade. Maybe it's his brother. I don't know.
What you paying these kids, man?
Exactly.
Whatever it takes.
But it was fun. And I did bring suckers for all the kids. And I did have one of the teachers say, "Why don't we save those for later?" So, I don't know that it was appreciated to sugar the kids up. But I'm gonna do it to other two schools, too. So.
Thank you. Ms. Elzayat?
Oh, sure. So, you know, I think about today's meeting and all the wonderful things that we saw and the people that we heard from. I think about, you know, Hillcrest and Nasrin and her team, and ELL learners, you know, leadership under Zainab Jawad, all of the things that are going on under this administration. And I would just like to say, Dr. Masalem, when you said thank you to the board, I actually chuckled. So, I just wanna say, you know, thank you to you. Thanks for being the leader of such a great team. We appreciate all the hard work. We know that the last two years for the district were not easy. You know, Marwa stepping up, taking that position, taking charge, and, you know, then interviewing, getting hired, and being the pick, you know, is a testament to everybody's hard work, really. All of the people who rolled up their sleeves and came in during the pandemic and worked so diligently to get things done. Batul and Sarah, I just wanna say the excitement in your eyes makes me excited, because I know that you guys are gonna do wonderful things, too. So, thank you all.
Okay. God, I can't top this. But, welcome to everyone. I'm sorry?
I was gonna say, we, Ms. Barbosa's still in the crowd, so I know. Welcome to you as well. So, sorry.
Yeah, of course, of course. Welcome to our new recruits. We love that you're gonna, again, that you're gonna face that challenge. Thank you to the wonderful principals. Now I know why the kids were disappointed to see me, because I didn't bring sugar. I can't compete. I wasn't thinking.
You gotta think, kid. You gotta think.
So, yes.
Just to make my attention, the whole time I read to you.
You're terrible. Anyway, it was wonderful being in the buildings. It really was. I had a great time. The kids were wonderful. All three principals, the staff, I couldn't have asked for better. And I loved to see everything that was happening. Everybody was alive. Things were, children were being challenged. Children were moving around. That was great. And that's what this, that's why we do this, so we can see the results of that. So, we look forward to seeing the new principals, the new assistants in action. And with that, I wanted to discuss if we wanted to call a special meeting. And with that, um, I wanted to discuss if we wanted to call a special meeting, um, for the, uh, for the purpose of discussing a sale of a property. Um, Dr. Musalem, can we agree on a date? Uh, if I can get some comments from board members?
How's next Monday?
Next Monday? Is that okay with everyone?
Can we make it early? Like at five?
Like five?
Yeah, five's good. Um, we would, is Haas okay?
Okay.
Is Haas okay?
I think he was okay.
He will be because he had to leave today.
Okay, but I mean, is he okay with five o'clock?
As long, as long as Kristen and I forty-eight hours in advance, we just need to post, that's all.
And with that, Kristen, please put everything on that calendar. Ooh, that was too much. Okay, so with that, we're gonna agree to a special meeting.
Does it work for you or not?
I'll have to move some stuff. I've got other meetings, but I can.
Is it five, it's okay?
My question is, it doesn't matter to me, is a special meeting or not, does it have to be a special meeting or can we just leave it for the next?
I think we should just leave it for the next board meeting because essentially it's.
I don't think it's that critical.
We're not in a time crunch here, guys. Yeah, so.
It's up to the board.
I'm, I'm fine leaving it for.
Yeah.
I mean.
Okay, so it's for the discussion, um, we can talk about which property it is.
At, at the.
Next meeting.
At the next meeting, yes.
At the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay, so we are in agreement.
Yeah, it'll be on the agenda.
Do everything at the next meeting?
Well, it, so if the board's requesting that the discussion for the real estate property go on to the agenda of the.
Next.
Uh, April fourth meeting, then all that information will be at the April fourth meeting agenda.
Perfect, okay.
Because the board has not made a decision to go one way or another.
No, no, we're gonna be discussing.
Exactly.
Absolutely.
Will it just be a discussion or open to vote?
No, it will be a vo, it'll be a voting item, but with discussion, of course.
Okay.
Can I ask a question on that, then?
Sure, go ahead.
Typically, we take, um, community discussion at the end of the meeting. Because this is something we're gonna vote on, are we gonna have community discussion before the vote?
We can do that, definitely.
You can change the order, as long as you give them an opportunity, yes.
Okay.
Well, my question to you would be, since was, this was a closed session item, if you don't detail what the property is, how are community members of that community going to know that you're talking about that item?
Doesn't the agenda get posted?
Yeah.
The agenda's posted forty-eight hours.
I get it, but I'm just saying, if you're gonna talk about it, you might as well bring it up so people know.
You, you, that's the, that's in the discussion of the board, yes.
We're, we're.
We're on time, but I mean, we're at time, I should say, but if you're gonna do it.
We are going to discuss the sale of the Field of Dreams. Um, so if anybody's interested in being a part of the dis, discussion, we welcome you on April fourth at regular, oh, seven, the seven o'clock board meeting. Okay, if you have any questions, um, have them ready for that day. And, uh, with that being said, is there any further discussion?
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Good night, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.